Call Metropolis City Council in order Monday, October the twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen. Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Kresine.
Present.
Daughery.
Here.
McManus. Midnight.
Here.
And Mizel.
Here.
Thank you.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Standing for prayer.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the blessings that you've given each and every one. Be with our community, dear heavenly Father, for the ones that have lost loved ones. Be with the sick. Be with the caregivers, dear heavenly Father, that are caring for the sick. We this meeting, that each and every decision that we make will be for the better of the community. Be with our leaders, dear heavenly Father, not only here in the United States, but our world leaders. Be with our armed circle personnel, dear heavenly Father, not only on foreign ground, but here in the United States. Guide and direct their lives, bring them safely home to their families. We ask of thy precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Need a motion to approve the minutes of the ten fourteen fourteen meeting. Motion made by Mr. Kresine. Second by Mr. McManus. Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kresine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
First item on the agenda, citizens request. Hearing none, we'll move just right on along. Mayor's report. Motion to proclaim the month of November as National Adoption Awareness Month. Motion made by Mr. Kresine. Second by Mr. McManus. Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kresine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus. Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept request for the purchase of seventeen Glock Model Twenty-two pistols. Yes, that's seventeen twenty-two. For the amount of two thousand nine seventy-eight in Kissinger's Police Supply Incorporated, which was the best quote. I actually looked at that and then I talked to Rick, Rick talked to me and we figured out that that maybe the chief had really made a good deal, a good deal, so I questioned him about it. That was a true price and it is, so that is very, very good. Motion made by Mr. Kresine, by Mr. McManus.
Mayor, what do you do with the old ones?
Tradate them. Tradate them, that's why we got that price.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's four hundred and fourteen dollars actually for each pistol, but they're giving us two hundred and fifty dollars to trade.
Okay.
Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kresine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to accept the purchase of seventy-five ton of salt at a cost of ninety-three dollars per ton for compass materials for a total amount of six thousand nine seventy-five. An increase of fifty tons over the initial agreement of twenty-five tons.
How much motion?
Motion, I'll explain that best to my ability. Made the second. If you remember, when we all started, we all actually all order our salt in like August, most of the time, in the middle of the summer. And this compass materials is actually has bought North American Salt Company out. Well, our initial salt order was two hundred ton. Cause we actually went down last year because of the bad weather and everything like that. We went through the biggest part of our accumulation of salt. Well, they changed the order from two hundred to one hundred. Said it was a shortage and whatever. But anyway, then I got another letter from them that said they had cut our one hundred to twenty-five. Which we use anywhere from twenty-five to fifty ton just for the salt brine. So we actually got on and tried to figure out someplace to get salt. It has to come off of the state bid. Salt companies in Tennessee and wherever won't sell to you out of state. So they pretty well have the market all cornered and everything like that. But finally through Cotters, they actually secured us another fifty ton and we have got that in. The bad part of that, we did get seventy-five, we're trying to contact and see if we can get at least another fifty and hope we have an odd winner can get by with it. But last year, the salt prices was fifty-two dollars a ton. This year, they're ninety-three dollars a ton. So it is quite a bit of an increase, but it's something we have to have and we'll just have to do the best we can. We may have to use more sand than than salt. I don't like the sand because of the sewer disposal plant and catch basins and many other things. But we'll just have to do the best we can do, so we do have a motion, we do have a second and that's unfortunately, that's best we can do. So hopefully we'll be all right. Call the roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Kresine.
Yes.
Daughery.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizel.
Yes.
Couple items before I get off of the mayor's report. I do need to make clear where I'm a reminder. On your desk, you had a meeting for October the twenty-ninth at one o'clock here in the council chambers, specifically for Comcast Cable discussions. The auditors are coming tomorrow. They'll be here for at least three days, possibly four, but we don't think over three. But rather than to have to vacate them out of the council chambers, they put their computers and everything up here and all their paperwork. We don't want to have to work around them, nor do we want to have to pay them to stand around waiting for us. So if it's acceptable, I would like to move the ordinance committee meeting to the community center in the conference room, right there, the small room in between Chris's office and the actual community center. So we don't have to do that by motion, I don't get, but we'll just make everybody aware that the meeting will be there at one o'clock. And that is the Comcast is going to be the only thing on that agenda. And then on another one is on November the fourth. We do have a need for a, I initially talked to Mr. Barfield, okay that on the fifth. Then I realized, I looked at my calendar again, the fifth is actually going to be the day of the Hope Light thing. Is that right, right, Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Hope Light on the fifth?
Yes.
So if.
At two o'clock.
Okay, if we can, if it be acceptable of Mr. Barfield to move the Water Light Street to November the fourth, which is a Tuesday, and here in the council chambers at one o'clock.
All right, sir.
Right now, the only thing I know is going to be on there is some discussion and stuff about the water plant and then some discussion about the burning system and at the landfill. So, and that's something we do need to address. Most of yous, I'm sure all know that we lost a employee last week. I think last Wednesday, maybe. Sonny Wilson actually passed away. I believe that probably the city of Metropolis is only the full-time position that Sonny actually served on. I think Sonny was forty-three years old and had worked for the city for over twenty years. So, you know, it is a loss and Sonny actually worked in the water filtration plant. And then today, we actually had another employee that actually resigned out of the water plant, not the water plant, water department. Nathan Gibson has actually taken employment with some kind of a construction company or stuff out of Oklahoma. So he is leaving immediately, in fact, the day was his last day, he'll be reporting to Oklahoma tomorrow, so. And I did want to bring everybody's attention, if you would, keep Linda and the family in your prayers and your mind and it will be, it will be something that, you know, you don't get over tomorrow, so. Anyway, I wanted to bring that to your attention. And I do want to, the city of Metropolis and the city employees and the ladies and gentlemen here in the city hall was actually very good during the times of the bereavement for the family and stuff like that. Way beyond the call to duty and stuff like that and did themselves proud. I mean, they did, they did a good thing for a good family, so I do want to thank everybody that participated and had anything to do with that. I'm sure it is appreciated, so. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else for the good of the council.
Mayor, I have one question.
All right.
This is on the meeting with Comcast. Was it Comcast or who else went through our notice, see it, sure project, made tracks?
Actually, I think that was Frontier.
Frontier. Are they gonna make amends for it some way?
We actually, Chad is going to contact them. And then Rick and I had a conversation, I'm not sure they have, I'm not sure they have easements with the city of Metropolis in the first place.
No. Well, I think we need to send them a bill, cause that's.
Chad was actually going to reach out to them, that actually, and I have, I really don't know what they were doing back there.
They didn't either, apparently, cause.
They threw through there, it looked like.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, that's the report we got back, that it was one of the residents actually went out, I think, and talked to them or spoke to them or tried to talk to them. And I think they told them it wasn't any of their business, that they'd go up down there anytime they got ready. So anyway, I called Chad and he's looking into that and I didn't talk to him today. But he is working on that, but it'd be like everything else, if it's not, as a courtesy to the residents and the customers, we'll, we'll end up having to fix it, but anyways.
There was three people that they told that to.
Yeah, I know they did to Mr. Peoples, I believe. And one other, and I don't remember who it was, but I think it was two.
Yeah, there's three.
Now, I think it was contained on that one end down there.
Right.
It was, yeah.
But I think.
But the grants is going great, I mean.
Oh, yeah, it looked good.
Good start.
So anyways, that's unfortunate and stuff like that, but we will be.
All right, thanks, Mayor.
Yes, sir. One other thing I might bring up, I don't, may be the place to do it, but we do need to make the citizens aware that we did actually know that we got an issue. Down on the lower power of Second and Third Street, R W's may, you may have got a call, you may not have. Last week, the latter part of the week, for whatever reasons, all the, all the trucks coming out of Cotters was directed out of the backside of the facility down there, instead of coming out on the highway, forty-five. You know, the truck entrance, it was actually coming through, coming down Third Street, crossing over and going down Cherry to get back to Highway forty-five. And I actually got two phone calls and more phone calls while I was talking to the lady. Conversation probably lasted ten minutes, maybe, maybe a little more, maybe a little less. And I actually, she stepped out of the porch and I actually heard the trucks going up and down the street and I didn't know if any of yous got any calls or anything like that. Still haven't figured out exactly why they were being routed down the other way, rather than come out on the highway and go right down through two residential areas, but anyway, that's, that's what those calls were about, so. Corporate counsel, Mr. Abel.
Mayor, just the only thing I'll mention briefly. With respect to the meeting on Wednesday, by all means, bring all your questions and everything you want, and any complaints you've had about Comcast. We've had, we've shared those with Comcast. This gentleman that's coming, Mr. Wilson, is like a regional manager. He has been very receptive to the things we've raised and he's followed up on those things. They, he has, they've tried to be a little more responsive, I think, to our concerns with our electric department. They're not perfect by the means, they're a long way from it at this point, but they've got a long way, they've got a lot of fences to mend, a lot of relationships to reestablish. But by all means, this needs to be, they, they want, right now, their franchise of the city of Metropolis expired two thousand nine or so, okay? If we wanted to terminate, we could, but we gotta give them a notice, we gotta also, really the only reason for terminating is if you're gonna go out and get bids, well, there's nobody else out there to bid, okay? So, but we need to make sure that we address in the new franchise agreement, things that might be of concern. We've raised some of those with him, but I want you all to feel free to ask questions. And I do believe that this gentleman is sincere and that he will follow up and try to get answers. But the mayor in particular wanted to make sure that the council had an opportunity to ask everything it wanted to ask before we really got into the nuts and bolts of a franchise agreement, so it is an important meeting if you can make it.
With that, we still got a lot of poles, you know, where we did electrical service in hospital edition around with Verizon. Is that who's?
Oh, this Comcast.
But they all share the same pole.
They're all from the same pole, but where they just cut it off and left it.
Yeah.
But is that gonna be part of the?
Well, we will have that in, in the new franchise agreement, we will have some, we've kind of gotten tougher with our poll agreements that say, look, we'll give you a notice, you have so many days to get it off. If you don't, we'll cut it down, we may lay it on the ground and we're not gonna be responsible for any damages if that occurs. Beyond that, I can't actually wreck out their, you know, we can't take their lines or their equipment, I can't do that. But if they're on our poles, we certainly could take them down and lay it on the ground. They, up to now, probably more Verizon than Comcast, they have been very responsive, let them care about it, cut it down, let it hang, let it fall, let it whatever. Drap it over a garage, it doesn't seem to matter.
And I truly believe that's what happened back there to those three residents, because we actually removed the Verizon lines off of those poles, because we had to get them moved where the contractors could then to finish their work. And I'm sure they were, the lines were laying on the ground back there, so, and they had to attach them to the new poles. But I can't tell you how many weeks Stoney actually was in communication with Frontier and Comcast, and I will say, Rick, Rick told you just exactly the way it was. Mr. Wilson is a pretty nice gentleman. He's easy to work with, he's, I think he's, I think he does the best he can do and stuff like that, but you'll like his attitude. He kind of worried me when he asked you to bring all of your complaints and everything from the citizens, because this is, this is only gonna be one meeting. So, you know, it may have to have a sack lunch or something go along with it, because we get, we get a lot of complaints from this service.
Well, that can do their poll fee, franchise poll fee.
Well, we can only charge one way or the other, we can't charge a poll fee plus a franchise fee. Federal law and state law restrict us from doing that. We can charge up to a five percent franchise fee, but we can't charge a poll fee if we do that, okay? So we could do, and any fee we charge on polls couldn't exceed what the five percent is. So it's easier just to impose a five percent fee.
Going down the line.
Going down the line.
And that's not a lot of money, so. Anything else, Mr. Abel?
No, I would just mention that the remaining items that we have on the agenda, I did prepare. So as we go through these things, if you have questions about any of these, I'd be glad to explain them.
All right. Moving on, committee reports, industrial committee, Mr. Midnight.
Yeah, and as Mr. Abel just pointed out, we've got a lot of stuff here and probably we need to get a meeting. These are first readings on several of these ordinances tonight, and we need a committee meeting for the next council meeting. So maybe we can tag one on the back of Mr. Barfield's next Tuesday.
That's not gonna be a marathon meeting unless there's a lot of stuff comes up between now and then, so we can certainly.
So let's just tack it on to the back, I'll need some time to get here. Tuesday the fourth.
Put it, what?
At one thirty, two o'clock, we'll be, if that.
Mr. Barfield, should I go on? We can certainly put it at one thirty.
All right, yeah, okay, let's do that, I can make one thirty.
Industrial at one thirty.
And that way, if there's any questions, anybody that's in comments, that they have a meeting to come to about these two ordinances. Okay, are we ready? And okay, you're supposed to open and read the bids for the farm lease airport property.
Okay, we have three.
We have three.
We have three. This one from the owner of our camp. He is going to do it for. And he's got twenty dollars in.
Twenty. He's, he offers to do it for, on the, he's talking about a crop share lease, that's what we've had in the past. One-third, two-thirds, which is the way we split it, plus he would pay twenty dollar per acre, per planted acre bonus on top of that. And that would be a cash bonus, the twenty dollar.
And the next one's from Reapy Farms. And they're gonna do a crop share agreement again, two-thirds, one-third. And then the landlord will pay a third of the fertilizing cost, trucking cost and lawn cost.
But no, no bonus for the acreage.
Right.
It's the same, except.
No bonus is on that one. And the last one is from Matthew Douglas. And he is going to do, he's gonna do a full lease, an annual lease payment of fourteen thousand.
Right. For five years. I don't know why. That's just a cash.
It's a cash, that's a cash for the council, yeah.
No matter what.
Figure.
Yeah, fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand.
Okay, anybody have any questions on those bids before we get on to the next bid?
Do we know as far as what we, I didn't bring my folder, is what we're getting off of it?
What we have been getting, we've been getting one-third, two-thirds. We, I'd have to have Linda pull it and tell you, I think we run about fifteen thousand, sixteen thousand a year typically get. I know one year, now, I know, cause I did check this back when we did, one year we actually were real low. The year we had the drought in two thousand twelve, we didn't really have a crop. He paid us five thousand and fifty-five hundred anyway, he paid fifty dollars an acre, is what he did. And in the year we had the drought. But I, if, for Bob's meeting, I'll have the past, the past three, four years of what we've gotten all that. Okay? See if you'll be able to see.
Is that clear?
Yeah. He just takes our expenses and our share of expenses come off the top and then it gives us another one.
Yep. Okay, I think we're ready now to open and read the bids for the purpose of a thousand and nine North Avenue and a thousand and fifteen North Avenue, the old police fire station and Coke building.
Okay, you have one. It's from Terry Properties. And he is going to do this at thirty thousand fifty dollars.
What was the name again?
It's Tommy Reed, it's T. Reed Properties.
Oh, that's true. Well, that's his plan, true. He offered thirty thousand fifty dollars. He agrees to the one-year lease with Coke and providing the parking spaces. Not one, I'm sorry, dollar per year lease, not, not, not one year, dollar per year lease. What we had put in the bids specs is what he agreed to.
Potential lease, but a dollar a year.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
The parking spaces, what we'd asked about, he'd do reasonable maintenance, we'd keep their condition unit maintained, give them free utilities. And he just, he attached like a letter of verification from his bank that he had money about to do it with. And he also put in his short-term and current and long-term plans for the, for the site as well.
Now, we don't have to, we don't have to have as far as eighty percent, we can, we had two methods to, in order to sell it.
You chose to use the bid method as opposed to the appraisal method, yes, yes, and, and and the ordinance I put in your packets was based on the, a bid method, that's how you would do it with a bid method, okay?
Okay, now, we're moving on, and Rick, are we gonna read a first reading on the farm lease if we haven't necessarily selected somebody?
Well, it's just, okay, it's, it's gonna be this, probably the standard form, right? You don't have to select. I mean, if you want, next meeting, we'll come back and just suspend the rules and pass it, it won't really matter. I think as long as we get it done in November, it's not gonna make any significant difference.
That's what I'm saying, we need to get it done.
We do need to get it done, so they'll know whether, what they wanna do, what they wanna do this fall.
So, I mean, we should probably just not do anything with that first, with that ordinance at this point? Or is it acceptable to take it as a first reading?
It's acceptable to take it as a first reading, I think, yeah.
Well, let's do that. And then like I said, we've got a meeting scheduled. And so that way, we can, we can handle it all out and make sure.
Unless there's some question about that particular form of ordinance, I mean, that would be the, I would expect.
Not that I know of.
You, you're just gonna fill in the blanks, whether it's crop share, cash, who the, who the party is, and that's gonna be it.
The premise is a first reading and you amend it if it needs to be.
You always amend it between times, so your amendment will be you'll fill in the blanks, basically, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll accept that ordinance, do we need a number on that yet?
No, cause you might, you never have to pass something else before the.
Okay, and then the second item is also a first reading on the sale of that property. And I guess we do know the bidder and we do know the amount, so we can fill that out if we need to. So we will accept that as a first reading also, and it will be open for discussion on that next Tuesday meeting.
Right.
Okay? All right.
And the only thing that might change a little bit when we get around to that final ordinance, if you accept that, is the property description will have a little bit difference. I mean, if you tell me you're gonna accept it or you recommend that you accept it at the next meeting or after a committee meeting, I'll get the surveyors down so that we get part of one of those lots, lot twelve, we say we're gonna sell part of it. Part of it has the gas tanks and the, the water tower, and so we need some area around that so we don't sell that off, is basically what I'll say. And we'll get surveyors down and we'll go over there and we'll draw out where there are any easements we need to keep or anything like that. Should be located, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then also, we have an ordinance, a first reading again on granting of a perpetual easement to, I think, Mid-America. And it's a fun reading.
Yeah.
Okay, you can get into this, it might take you three or four weeks, sometimes you'll fall asleep while you're trying to read it. Okay, Rick?
If you remember, we actually did in two thousand twelve, I think, we approved, might have been ten, we approved a lease with them for a real estate site, and initially the considerations, I mean, they're gonna put. And initially, the consideration was gonna be, they're gonna put us up a billboard that would be for public use down by the, what was then the speck, down by where the lube yard is. Well, at the last minute, they got all the stuff there, and I D.O.D. canceled the permit, okay? Well, then after months and years, I guess you'd say of haggling with I D.O.D., and couldn't get one, we're trying to come up with something else. Well, they could pay us a lease payment, but it was really, it was a small payment every month for a long, long time. Well, they would just as soon have a permanent easement for that sign and pay us cash upfront. So, instead of taking little payments every month, get forty thousand upfront. The other thing they've asked us for is an option to get a second billboard. Now, where that would be located is not exact, except when we get to your committee, and we'll show this. I do have the plats that show where the current one is. It would either be just to the south, so it didn't get any further really into the industrial park, much, much deeper. Or there is some discussion now in Illinois about changing the regulations so you can get them closer to the interstate. So, if you recall, this is up on that north line, kind of where the Buffalo Road, okay? Well, they might put another one between where the current one is and the interstate, which would be right in line with where the electric comes in, it'd be fairly. These things only occupy about a ninety by hundred and twenty foot period of property, so it's not like we'll take up a huge amount. And they're willing to give us five thousand dollars for the option, okay? So, and then if they exercise it, pay us thirty-five thousand, so we can forty thousand for each of these signs, basically, is what it will stand for. So, just, that's probably enough explanation, but that's, so you don't have to spend all my reading holes.
Right, and then like I said, we will be discussing that next Tuesday, and making sure that everybody's got all their questions answered before we go down.
But if you do want to read that interesting piece of document there, feel free to, and then you can talk about it at the industrial meeting.
Yeah, right. So, that's all I have, Mayor. We've got that meeting, and a lot of first reading.
Thank you very much.
For all that good reading down there, Jim.
Next, department heads. Chief?
Nothing for me, sir.
Chief Massey?
As a reminder, Friday's Halloween, watch out for little kiddies. And then on Saturday, Fort Massacre, seven, five to seven, bring your old gowns up there.
Stoney?
Just want to announce that our new employee, Clint Ferguson, has taken on his probationary period, so will be proceeding with his education training.
Frank? Ms. Christie? I would say too that for anybody that didn't go by the park, for the encampment, missed a heck of a lot of people. It was, it was unreal on Saturday afternoon of how many people, and I, I actually saw people parked in areas that I'd never seen anybody parked and stuff like that. The weather was great, I think all the organizations did very well with their refreshment stands, and most of them sold out both days, which is always a good thing. So, the Chris at Fort Massacre State Park and all the vendors and everything done a exceptional job. And we, we're still getting emails and stuff like that complimenting the city in Fort Massacre. And the people that actually do the vending and stuff like that out there, everybody was very well pleased. I don't think we had any alibi or any issues, you know, had a couple of children that actually kind of got separated from their parents and stuff like that. Most of them just got off in the time and stuff, in the hills and the hollers with their little bows and arrows, and actually kind of lost track of what time it was. It was a good time for all, all business. New business.
Mayor, I have two items. I was approached this afternoon, somebody wanting me to request of the city a donation for the youth that kind of environment for this year.
I've already taken care of it.
You've already taken care of it, all right, that's been done. And the other thing is, I spoke with Ms. Frammer today, and she has boarded up the house as we had requested, and she asked for an extension. And I was supposed to misterize something about that, so I think maybe we're getting what we want down that corner, so.
Mr. Mary, whether we'll go by and make sure that it is boarded up properly in the back.
I was kind of impressed, they've done a good job.
Do we need her to do anything? She wants to January, to meet the herd, or she's wanting to take the beans out and also.
She's got the beans sold.
And then tear it down.
And then she'll.
It's up to the ordinance committee instructing Mr. Abel to send her a letter, and he gave her thirty days. If you want to amend that, that's your, that's your privilege. It's been amended, you know, twice already. So, that's strictly, you know, up to y'all. We've, we've done what we were asked to do.
Yeah, I was like, we, we, it's, y'all told me what to do, and that's what we did, so if you tell me to do something else, that's what we'll do.
I'll, I'll help you with that.
Okay.
I had one thing, Mayor, I noticed, which page, I read the magazine, I M A.
What is it?
Oh, it's Chairman.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's a big deal up there.
Yeah, yeah, front page, yep.
Yeah, we was up there last week, he got my magazine.
Well, no, I wasn't dancing, I put that everywhere, you're like some.
Any other new business before we get on track. Miscellaneous reports. Financial report, payment of salary, payroll, and contract bills, moved by Mr. McManus. Seconded by Mr. Corzine. Call roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
I'll make that motion too.
Payment of miscellaneous bills, just trying to get that in there between them calls. Call roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine? Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
We do have a need for an executive session under lease, sale, or exchange of real estate.
Let's see, pending litigation.
Motion made in second, call roll.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown? Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.